Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Today is March 4th, 2025, at the Douglas Board of Selectmen's meeting in the municipal center, Resource Room. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, welcome and thank you all for coming. Today is, it was a difficult day. We last week lost two town residents that really were exemplary people, wonderful community men, and we are going to spend a little time recognizing them today. The first was Robert Josie, passed away unexpectedly on Wednesday, February 26th, 2025, after injuries sustained from an accident. He was predeceased by his wife of 51 years, Elaine Josie, in 2019. He is survived by three sons, Brian Kaye and his wife Amy Josie of Douglas, Scott A. Josie of Thompson, Connecticut, and Kevin R. Josie of Webster. Six grandchildren, Jack Montana, Christopher Schyla, Nathan and Samuel. Three siblings, Bernadette LeBlanc and her husband Gary of South Grafton, Lou Vincent of South Grafton, Margaret Bourgoin of Maine, as well as several nieces and nephews and many good friends. He was predeceased by his daughter Kim Josie, who died at birth, and his sister Mary Josie. Born in Chelsea, Mass. on March 21st, 1944, he was the son of Alan and Lucille Patient Josie, and grew up in the Grafton Hills section of Worcester. He was educated from St. Stephen's School, as well as Worcester's Boys' Trade. Bob was a licensed plumber, operating Robert A. Josie Plumbing and Heating for many years until his retirement. He was also a local real estate investor. Bob was a dedicated public servant to the town, serving as Water and Sewer Commissioner for 40 years, and he was also the town plumbing inspector. He was a mopar muscle enthusiast, collecting many beauties over the years. He enjoyed going to the car shows and taking daily rides. Bob loved boating and jet skiing on the Douglas Res, and always treasured a sunset cruise. He was a resident of the town of Douglas for the past 56 years, and a fixture in town, always greeting everyone with his infectious smile. Bob loved spending time with his family, and was especially proud of his grandkids. He enjoyed traveling to Michigan and Georgia to visit family. He will be sorely missed by family and many, many friends. His funeral mass will be held tomorrow, March 5th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in St. Dennis Church. Memorial donations may be made to the Multiple Sclerosis Foundation National Headquarters. And I'm going to certainly allow anyone in the audience that would like to talk about Bob to do so. But I will just tell you, early on in my time as a selectman, I learned to really value Bob's opinion, thoughts, and demeanor, as he really was a good, excellent role model, kind as can be. So with that, I'd be glad to open it up to anyone in the audience that would like to say something about Bob or the board. Come on, Sullivan.
Yeah. Thank you. Bob Sullivan, Water Sewer Systems Manager. I've had the pleasure of working with Bob Josie for many years. I worked with him for years before I came to the town of Douglas. He was actually the reason I came. I met him at a trade show one night, and he had said that the position was open, so he asked me if I was interested, and came in and interviewed, and that was 16 years ago. But I had worked with Bob since like 1992, so, long time, wealth of knowledge. We always relied on him, knowing all the aspects of the Water and Sewer Department. He was there for 38 years, I believe, so, you know, when we couldn't find something in records, we always looked to Bob to get the information.
And he knew it.
Good man, yeah. Anytime you went out to lunch somewhere with him, he had a dozen people come over and say hi, because he knew everyone everywhere. One of his favorite things, I think, was going out to eat. So, yeah, it's a terrible loss to the department, to the town, and overall, so, it was a pleasure working with him.
Great man.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it.
Matt, do you have anything you'd like to say?
It's hard to follow Bob and all the folks that we saw this evening at the wake, because they're so much closer to him, and the enormous influence he had as a man, not just as a public servant. Funeral home was absolutely crowded with family and friends, because Bob was such an affable guy, that he left everybody with a positive impression, and they were always, people are always happy to associate with him. His family should be duly proud of all that he accomplished in his life. The circumstances of his passing are profoundly unfair, and you think to yourself, if you ever make it to the pearly gates, you'd say, "You know, Pete, before you let me in, I got a few questions about some things that, some decisions that were made that I don't think were very fair." And I think we, and many of us in our lives can think about people who passed away unexpectedly or tragically, and we wish it hadn't have been that way. But we saw, right to the end, the very best Bob Josie, a guy driving around in his great cars, and with 100% of his faculties, and he was a gift to everyone he knew for his entire life. And nobody had to watch him decline to any point of being really sad. He left on his feet, fighting, as he did through his last round of surgery, and being such a strong guy that he made it through. We will really miss Bob. He's a tremendous encyclopedia of knowledge about the town, and I think he helped bring people together as a neutral party on many things, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't go that. Thank you, Matt. Anybody in the audience like to say something about Bob? Well, I will leave it with maybe my last real long interaction with Bob. It was actually at the volunteer dinner. I was fortunate enough to sit at his table, and, you know, to anyone in town, you know, Bob Josie loved this town and loved the people in it, and I think it's appropriate at this time that we have a moment of silence for Bob. Thank you. On the heels of that announcement, we have another exemplary town resident, whose actions over the course of years just exudes kindness and caring. Michael Cahill, 87, of Main Street, a leafy line Douglas resident, passed away on Friday, February 28th, 2025, after a period of declining health. He was predeceased by his wife Teresa Cahill, with whom he shared 42 years of marriage in 2002. He is survived by his second wife of 17 years, Brenda Wise Cahill, his son Michael L. Cahill, and his wife Kathleen of Springfield, his grandson Thomas Cahill of Houston, Texas, and his sister Patricia J. Scribner of Florida, as well as many nieces and nephews, and many great friends. He was predeceased by three brothers, Patrick Lawrence and Henry Cahill, and two sisters, Marcia and Colleen LaBelle. Born in Douglas on November 23rd, 1937, he was the son of Lawrence and Ethel Aldrich Cahill. He was educated from Douglas Primary Schools and graduated from Worcester's Boy Trade, where he studied to be a machinist. In addition, he honorably, he served honorably in the United States Navy during the 1950s. He spent over 40 years working as a machinist for Parker Manufacturing in Worcester, until the company's closure. Mr. Cahill was a commendable member of the community, dedicating over 40 years as a volunteer firefighter. Mike was a jack-of-all-trades, master of them all, providing assistance to many over the years in the areas of carpentry, roofing, siding, electrical, plumbing, welding, and mechanical repairs. In his leisure time, he enjoyed engaging in projects with his cellar machine shop and tending to his vegetable gardens. He was a great man and cherished his relationship with his family and friends. A man of great faith, Mike was a lifelong parishioner of St. Dennis Church, where he left his mark, a stack of pennies left on the cross of the bell tower of the church in his childhood years. His funeral will be held on Friday, March 7th, at St. Dennis at 10:00 a.m., and burial will follow at St. Dennis Cemetery. Calling hours for Mike will be held on Thursday, March 6th, from 4:00 to 7:00, at the Jackman Funeral Home. So, I know there's a pretty large red contingent, and I know Chief and Chief, if you guys would like to come forward and talk about Mike's impact on the department, on the town, on yourselves personally, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, so bear with me a little bit. Mike was a great friend, mentor of mine. I'm going to tell you a couple of war stories, just because it breaks the ice for me here. My very first fire was a brush fire in Rydell Road. We had a 61 International dump fire truck, and those days, you get on the fire department, Chief Naterosik said, "Hey, Ferno, you want to get on the fire department?" "Sure, why not?" So I get on, we get a call, we go down Cottage Street, we jump on the back of the truck, hold the rails, like the good old days, and we went up to Rydell Road, almost near West Street, for a brush fire. So, me being a brand-new kid, I grabbed the first line I saw, which was a three-inch supply line, which is a big no-no, and I ran off into the woods, and I got my ass chewed for about 20 minutes after that, when we went to do the cleanup, because that's how he taught you. You got your butt chewed, but he meant well in the end, and if he liked you, he liked you. If he didn't like you, you weren't going to be liked. That's just the way, Mike was black and white, that's just the way it went, but, you know, he saved this town so much money over the years, with his machine shop in the basement. When we were in lean times, Mike could make anything. I'm sorry, but he could put an ass in a cat, I have to say, just because he could. You know, that guy Ross knows with his dad was his neighbor. You know, Mike could fix anything. He was very good to everybody, not just the fire department. Anyone that went there with a lawnmower, you know, an electrical motor, whatever it was, he could fix it, or he would get it fixed. And even up till his retirement, he came to help us. The trucker, we're just finishing up now, the forestry truck, Mike worked on that truck with us, right up till the end. Just last Tuesday, he was in asking questions about it. Was so devoted to this town, so he'll sorely be missed. You know, he was a good personal friend of mine. I was glad that myself and a few other members, the police chief, were all there for his last breath, and that meant a lot, you know, so, I'm going to start, because Kelly wants to say anything else.
I think he still has some outstanding work down at 120 Gilboa Street. We're sorry, but that's the kind of guy he was. He's just up until the very end, so it's just an honor to linger in his shadow, so thank you for the opportunity to talk about him.
Of course. Thank you. And the board?
Well, Mike's mother and my father's mother were sisters, so we're second cousins or whatever. And back in the mid to late 80s, I was actually working for the water department in town with Mike's son, Mike. And we had to get some bearings for one of the pumps, and they weren't greasable. So good old Mike, "Let me see those things. I can put grease fittings on them," and sure enough, he scooted home to his basement, and he comes back, and son of a gun, these bearings have grease fittings on them. So you talk about saving, you know, coming through, and, just an amazing man, just, like you say.
Yep. He'll be missed very well. 87 years old. That's great. Anyone else? With that, I'd ask that we have a moment of silence for Mike Cahill. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, you guys might come back in a second, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something that's currently not on the agenda? Seeing as none, item number five is, you know, this is the interesting thing, there's no owner's manual as to how to make a good transition from something sad to something that really needs to be celebrated, but I'm going to do that right now. In regards to some public safety measures that were taken by our professionals, we are here today to recognize some community public safety leaders that really made a difference on the lives of an individual, and I understand the individual may be in the audience. Come forward, please. Good evening. Hello.
So my name is Janine Chairman, and these first responders, they saved my life. My son called 911. I was out of it. I was having a hard time breathing. They showed up at my house. They walked me into the ambulance. I don't really remember much of anything. I guess I had a massive heart attack, and I was in a coma for several weeks, but if it weren't for those first responders, I wouldn't be sitting here today, you know, so I, no words can thank them enough for what they did to save my life. My kids weren't ready to see their mom, you know, go, so I am very appreciative of what they done, and I thank the town for, you know, helping out Northbridge, because I live in Northbridge, for sending them over to, you know, help me in distress.
So was that a mutual aid situation, Chief? It was?
Excellent.
Yeah, that is wonderful.
Glad you're here.
It is, so, like I said, I don't remember much from the time they showed up to my house, until I woke up from a coma several weeks later. You know, I really don't remember anything.
And everything's good now?
Oh, great. Yes, yeah.
When did that?
Just got back from a cruise in the Bahamas, and, yeah, yes, so, thank you.
You may find yourself on a cruise much more. How long ago did that happen?
So that happened Halloween.
Okay.
And so I was on my lunch break from work. I work from home. I work for UMass Hospital, actually, and I was on my lunch break, and my son asked me, "Are you going to eat?" And I said, "No, I'm not really feeling too well." And he said, "What's wrong?" I said, "I don't know, I just got like a little hot burn, and I'm having a little trouble breathing." And then I went upstairs, and I sat on my bathroom floor, and he helped me up and put me, brought me to his bedroom, and sat me on the bed, and called 911, so.
Okay.
He deserves congratulations.
Absolutely. So, well, it's good to see you, and...
Thank you. No prior health problems or anything like that either, just like, I guess I had double pneumonia, and my blood pressure dropped so low that I went into like a stress heart attack, so.
Okay, well, cruises will reduce some of that.
Sure will.
Let's practice what I preach, actually. Get on a cruise. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Chiefs, do you want to say anything before we issue these commendations?
I'd like to wish to take the lead on this one.
Please come on up, Lieutenant. And the Assistant Chief.
So we prepared a little synopsis here, so that everybody will actually know kind of what happened, and get a feel for what we do and what our men and women do. So, we prepared a little thing here. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Town Administrator, fellow board members, we want to thank you guys for the opportunity for us to be here tonight. So we're here to actually honor four members of our department for their actions on a call, October 31st, mutually an ambulance call to Northbridge. On the afternoon of October 31st, the Douglas Fire Department was requested to respond mutually to the town of Northbridge for an EMS call. The on-duty crew responded without delay, and quickly arrived at the scene to find a female who's complaining of chest pain and shortness of breath. The Douglas EMTs and paramedics quickly assessed the female and prepared her for transport to the hospital. The crew performed a thorough medical assessment, including a 12-lead EKG. The EKG revealed that the female was having a heart attack, or in medical terms, a STEMI. The crew immediately began medical treatment and began transport to UMass Memorial Medical Center Emergency Room. A short time after beginning the transport, the patient suffered a sudden cardiac arrest, became pulseless, and stopped breathing. The crew immediately called back the fire headquarters, requested additional personnel to respond and provide assistance with medical treatment.
Tell me where they were.
They were in Northbridge on this ambulance call. So the request came in from Northbridge, and as they started the transport, they actually were headed towards the highway, so they actually met them on the, the additional personnel arrived at the Douglas-Northbridge Town Line, climbed aboard the ambulance. Advanced cardiac life support measures were deployed, and the female was defibrillated multiple times, along with cardiac medications that were administered. Reassessment after ACLS treatment was deployed showed that she had regained a pulse or RASK, return of spontaneous circulation. Her vital signs continued to remain unstable, and a STEMI alert was called ahead to the hospital to allow them to assemble their cardiac team prior to arrival. The patient was rapidly transported to UMass Memorial Medical Center Emergency Room, where her care was transferred to the cardiac team in the STEMI bay. We believe the actions and treatments provided by all personnel involved with this call profoundly and positively impacted this patient's life. After extensive cardiac treatment, admission to UMass, the patient was able to be discharged, as we can see here tonight, and is here with us tonight. So at this time, we'd like to bring up the individuals that were involved in the call. So Chief John Ferno. Paramedic Matt Tuffo. And firefighter EMT Danica McCullough. At this time, we actually, at the department, we would like to present to each one of our members a life-saving award. Most people in their entire career are lucky to have maybe one or two of these. My career spans over 35 years, and I can tell you, I've only had a handful in my years, so this is, it's a great honor to actually know that you've impacted and saved a life. So we're very proud of our team and our staff. I believe that you guys should be as well, so thank you for letting us be here.
Yeah, of course, thank you. Stay up there, if you wouldn't mind. We, as a board, will be issuing a certificate of commendation to those four. It's good, this grandkid needs to know that his granddad's a hero.
Sure is.
All right. So the board will issue a certificate of commendation for the very same thing, for recognition of a successful effort in saving a human life, which involved exceptional courage and/or performance. We also have what I believe is a citation, actually, let us do this properly, "The American Heart Association Heart Saver Hero Award is presented to the following four, 'In recognition of advancing the mission of the American Heart Association in emergency cardiovascular care through a courageous act in effort to save a life,'" that was issued by Tammy Gregory, the executive vice president of the American Heart Association, dated January 28th, 2005. So while we're not big and pomp and circumstance, we'll get up and take a picture for Pat. Go on, Board.
I just want to say one thing, although it was four of us tonight, I want to honor everyone, and my department, I feel, deserved this award as well, because everyone works just as hard as we do. Some days, you don't get that recognition, but truly, I see that every day from you guys, and I appreciate everyone doing this.
You guys staying for the exciting stuff?
Does it get any more exciting than that, Tim?
Transfers no removal money, they could watch that.
They could watch that.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
No problem. Thanks for coming out.
Can you give that to...
Yeah, it's a tough one. Yeah, we need a job with that.
Just this one?
Yeah.
The other one.
Yeah, the other one. Nothing you can do, yeah, it's bad.
Chief Miglianico, you brought a friend. Who have you brought?
This is Chief Mark Montmaney from the Oxbridge Police Department, who is the chair of our committee that, we have six-town regional animal control, so Chief Montmaney is the chair of that committee, so we all have a seat at the table. We review the animal control activity and everything, but Chief Montmaney is, sets the budget, puts the budget together, and is the direct supervisor of the animal control.
Good evening, sir, welcome.
Thank you for having me. That's a tough act to follow, but I thought all those people were here to hear my conversation. Apparently, that's not the case. So if I could get like five minutes of your time, what I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about the program and how it came to be, and then we'll talk about the follow-on agreement for, it's a three-year agreement, you can opt out at any time, but it's a three-year agreement to bind the six towns to this animal control program. So I've got a presentation up on the screen, if I can figure out how to do it. Let's see here. Okay, looks like it's starting. So when this program first started, Douglas, Oxbridge, and Mendon employed a single ACO to work for the three-town region. Oxbridge took the role of management prior to my arrival in Oxbridge. At some point in that timeframe, Millville, Hope Dale, and Blackstone were individually paying a stipend for an ACO. So they weren't, it wasn't a salaried employee, it was just a stipend. But in all six cases, it was the same individual. So that's kind of unusual. So in 2018, I took over at the Oxbridge Police Department, and I couldn't understand how our ACO was doing work in other towns during his work hours for the three towns that were employing him, right? So what was happening is, he was going to another town to handle a call for a town that was paying him by stipend, while I was paying him... a town that was paying him by stipend while I was paying him to be our full-time ACO. And to me, that seemed wrong. And the issue came to a head when Hope Dale, a Hope Dale dog bit the ACO in Blackstone during his Oxbridge workday.
That's a big dog.
The question became, you know, who, who's his employer at that point? And who pays the workers' compensation? Who pays for the medical? The ACO was using Douglas, Oxbridge, and Mendon's vehicle to service non-regional towns. And Oxbridge, Douglas, and Mendon were paying fringe benefits and, and retirement benefits, and the other three towns were not. So that kind of led us to a decision point. Now, the ACO at the time couldn't take any time off because there was no one else to feed the animals or, or take care of the animals that were in shelter. Now, we, we had to form a change here and there were two ways to do it. We could either tell Blackstone, Millville, and Hope Dale to go find their own ACO, or we could bring them into the region. And it turns out that all six towns agreed to a regional plan. And we, we decided that the towns would pay based on a cost per capita, using the most recent census data. So depending on the size of your town, that's how much you paid. And a budget would be prepared that would call for two full-time ACOs. So we would have somebody who could, you know, take a vacation while somebody else could care for the animals. And we were going to provide part-time ACOs in order to provide 24/7 coverage because most of these towns, you know, when a dog gets hit by a car or when a dog gets loose and bites somebody, it's typically oftentimes not during regular work hours. So we would purchase a second vehicle and we would regionalize, we would get a regionalization grant, which we did in fact get. And then each town would have a seat on the governance committee. So there's one person from each of the six towns on a governance committee. We meet a couple of times a year to review any, anything that may need to change or be updated. And before I go any further, let me tell you a little bit about the shelter. So the only municipal shelter for dogs in the area is the one in Blackstone at 14 Chestnut Street. It's owned by the town of Blackstone. And they've agreed to provide shelter space for our regional towns in return for the ACOs managing the animals. So the way it would work under other circumstances is if you had a dog that was impounded for some reason, either because somebody turned it in or you found it, or whatever the case might happen to be, you end up paying a commercial kennel to maintain that dog on a daily basis. So they charge a certain amount per day, which, which the, the town would eat up. Under this scenario, in, in return for the ACOs feeding the dogs and, and caring for them, they provide the shelter for free. But it is a Blackstone asset, just so you know. And the money generated by the adoption of the animals is managed by the town of Blackstone, but is for the benefit of all of us. So they use that money to, to repair and fix up the shelter, and they also use it for veterinary expenses when we outrun our joint contribution for veterinary expenses. So we all contribute to a certain amount to veterinary expenses and inevitably, we, our costs exceed that. And Blackstone, through this, this fund, pays the rest of those fees. So we applied for the regional compact efficiency grant, and in March of 2022, we received $130,000 from the state government. They loved what we were doing and asked to make it a case study in how other towns could regionalize. We, we created a three-year intermunicipal agreement, which was vetted by all, all six communities' legal staff and was in compliance with Chapter 40, Section 4A. A second ACO was hired and a second vehicle was purchased. And I got to tell you, purchasing the second vehicle was an enormous task. This was during COVID, when used car prices were more than new car prices. You remember? And nobody could get them. And we ended up looking for, our vehicle of choice is a Ford Transit Connect. It's kind of like a plumber's van or something.
Mini vans, you know, small utility van.
Right. But it's perfect for us because it has to be enclosed because we have dogs in the back. And we have enough room to put a couple, two or three kennels back there. And we, we thought about using a pickup truck, but a pickup truck is open, open to the elements and it's just not as good for, for the animals. So we ended up finding a brand-new Ford Transit Connect. We paid MSRP for it. I apologize. We paid MSRP for it. And, and the document here before you today is the follow-on to that three-year agreement. So believe it or not, it's up already, the three-year agreement's up already. And the agreement calls for the governance and it calls for all the other things, but one of the important things to you is any town that wants to get out needs to provide 60 days of advance notice. So if you want out, you run out. Now, the opposite problem is actually happening. We have, we have communities who are querying to see how they get in. And the problem with that is that we don't know that we can allow another single town in. So picture what would happen. We would probably have to hire another full-time person, get another car.
Yeah.
I don't know that one town's, yeah, I don't know one town's going to, so my theory is we would probably have to do this in two-town increments. But the Blackstone Shelter, where we shelter the dogs, has no more room. So we may be at capacity unless, unless either Blackstone agrees to expand the, the shelter or we find other resources. But I, I think, I think the, the governance committee has discussed this and everybody's kind of comfortable where we're at. So, so in 2023, this was the first year we had any real data. So in 2023, we had two full-time personnel, two part-time personnel, and two potential part-timers that were looking to be onboarded. We ended up with two Ford Transit Connects. One is in '23, was a 2015 with 111,000 miles. That, that vehicle now has over 120,000 miles. And the other is a brand-new 2022 that in '23 only had 8,311 miles on it. What we identified was that the one thing animal control officers are not good at is tracking their own data. They don't have any mechanism to track and they weren't keeping details of what they do. So we put a stop to that right off the bat. We identified the following data elements that you see on screen and intakes. So what I want to know is when, where, what contact, what the resolution was, and on the intakes, I want to know what kind of animal it was, and more importantly, I want to know what happened to the animal. Our goal is not to put down any dog. So the only dogs we ever, ever, ever put down are dogs that are inappropriate to be turned over to anyone. So on occasion, you get a dog who is either so dangerous that they, you can't in good conscience give them up to anybody. Only in those circumstances do we ever put a dog down, and likewise with cats. So this is what the statistics looked like in the very first year. What you see here is that the overwhelming call volume is in Oxbridge and Douglas. And the smaller towns have a smaller percentage of that, Millville being the smallest. And they're also, I mean, that follows our population pretty closely as well, in our dog population. So calls for service between Oxbridge and Douglas were the lion's share. But in 23, 2023, we took in over 200 animals as a region, and 110 of those were adopted out. Now, some of them returned to their owners, some of them, all kinds of things happened, but we had, we adopted out 110 animals. And typically what happens is when somebody adopts an animal, that animal's already been vetted, they've already had their vaccinations, they get microchipped, and they're ready for somebody to take. And in return for that service, we ask for a donation, which almost everybody provides us with. That donation goes into that Blackstone fund that we talked about, and from there, they pay for upgrades to the, to the, to the shelter space and they pay for veterinary expenses. Now, in, in 2024, we had better data. And we had a, it was the first year we had full data. And animal adoptions, once again, we, we took in 232 animals between 2020, 1023 and 1024. And you can see from the map, we were able to plot out calls for service based on the map. Now, the one thing I want to point out to you, which you probably have already noticed, the high number comes from Blackstone. And the reason for that is because anything that happens at the shelter goes under Blackstone. So if somebody comes to adopt a dog, that's a Blackstone. Even though it might be a Douglas dog, that, that call for service comes to Blackstone because that's where the shelter is. So what we're going to do moving forward is we're trying to segregate shelter calls from the rest of Blackstone, just to make it more appropriate for anyone like yourselves who want to look. Call it again, calls for service. I don't know if you folks realize how much work the ACOs do, but it is extraordinary. They are constantly caring for, taking dogs to veterinary. A lot of the dogs we take in are injured or haven't been cared for. And, you know, we've taken dogs in, remember in the last couple of years, somebody dumped a bag, trash bag full of puppies into the Blackstone. All these kind of things happen and what's happened is most of the animal control organizations in the region help each other out. So they check around, who's got space? Can you take this? Can you take that? But we constantly see animals that were undernourished or abused in some way, shape, or form. And by the time they leave our care, these are adoptable dogs that, that families love to take. So, and not to mention some of the strange animals that we deal with. We've had goats, rabbits. People call us for wildlife. Injured owl. There's a, there's a goat in my backyard. All those kind of things end up coming to the animal control office as well. And their community involvement has been quite good. So they do vaccination clinics, they do adoption days, they do a comfort dog program. So one of the dogs that we took in as a shelter dog was a young, I think it's a cockapoo, it's a, it's one of those mixed dogs.
Labradoodle.
Labradoodle. That's what it is. It's a labradoodle. And what, what they realized is that this young labradoodle was not really a wild puppy. He was a very calm animal and he had an unusual trait. This dog would go and befriend any animal that came into the shelter. So whenever they brought in a new dog, they're always terrified, right? They're in a new place, they have no idea, there's all kinds of animal smells, and they freak out. This dog would walk up, lay down next to them, and, and spend time with them until they calmed down. And so we recognized the uniqueness of this dog. And the animal control officer called me and asked me if we could take this animal to, to training to be a comfort dog. And so we, we decided this would be a great thing, not as good as Douglas's comfort dog.
Been trained him for free.
Yeah. Not as good as comfort, but, but we often take this dog around to schools and stuff like that, and the dog seems to know when somebody's in despair and ends up on their lap, and it's been a great thing. We provide internship opportunities at the shelter. We have a very active social media page. You know, you won't believe how many people they attract attention to. We have a foster program. We have a low-cost spay and neuter program for all the regional towns. And we also do kennel inspections. So the new, the new law just changed that anybody who has more than four dogs needs a kennel license. And specific to, to Oxbridge, I'm sorry, specific to Douglas, we have a listing of work that they've done in Douglas. So as of 2024, they sent out 461 late notices to families in town that hadn't registered their, their dog. They sent out 267 violations to 180, 198 families, and they issued four additional violations to, to an individual in Oxbridge and ended up receiving $1,200 in, in money from a Douglas resident. So they've been very active. And let's see, so today, the reason I'm here is because the intermunicipal agreement is up for renewal. It's been three years already. Nothing has changed. There's some edicturials, but no dates and stuff like that, but nothing in the, in the, the program has changed at all. We continue to meet twice a year on, on the program and we take input from anybody who wants it. The town has the option to withdraw from the program within 60 days of advance notice. And each town maintains authority and oversight into the enforcement actions in their town. So if you want more enforcement done in your town based on a particular thing, that's fine. It'll be, it'll be your town that ends up adjudicating it. And so oftentimes, if somebody appeals a ticket or something like that, it goes to the, to the town administrator or something like that. But you also do have a rule, a bylaw in Douglas that says a first offense must be handled with a warning. Yep. So this is that. And Oxbridge provides the supervision, employment, and financial management. So we handle the collection of money from all the towns. And we, we have developed one problem with our accounting that I'd like to bring to your attention. The original plan was for the communities, the six communities, to put $7,000 into a hopper each year for the eventual replacement of a vehicle. Our accountant is not sure that's going to meet state muster. So when they sent it out last, they didn't, they didn't include the portion of the $7,000. So that's going to create a problem that I see, that we're going to have to replace that car that's got 120,000 miles on it at some point, not, in the not-too-distant future. And we might have to go to all six towns for, for financial input into that. My hope was by three years in, we'd have $21,000. But we're working with the state to find out if there's a way that an intermunicipal organization like ours can, can have money that will transcend the fiscal year.
She was, just for the record, she was stone-faced. Did not, did not.
I was looking for a nod or something.
She must be an accountant.
That's a great question. That's a great question to ask in Oxbridge to resolve.
Yeah. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have. I have the agreement right here. I can provide you with this presentation on paper if you'd like to see it, it's up to you. But if you have any questions, I'm open.
I got two questions. Any chance you could get another grant from the state for this?
Well, there is an opportunity now that you mention it. Thank you for that intro. So several of the towns are interested in including animal inspector into this program. Now, that's two different things, right? So the animal control officer deals with one thing. The animal inspector is the one who quarantines your dog if he bites somebody. It's the one who goes and checks to make sure your horses are.
Careful.
Careful. Barn inspections and all that. So, so here's how it works right now. The animal control officer goes out because the next-door neighbor's dog bit you. And he goes out and he does a report, and then he says, the animal inspector's going to come by to tell you to quarantine your dog. Why? Those two people aren't the same person? I don't know. And the only reason I can think of is in Oxbridge, I know that the animal inspector is the property of the health department and not the town. And I asked them if they would consent to, to making the animal control officer an animal inspector, and they said, thank you, but no, thank you. But now, Hope Dale wants it, I'm told Douglas wants it, there may be, we may be at that tipping point. So if we get to that tipping point where all the towns want to do it, I think we can apply for another regionalization grant. I don't, I'm not sure of that, but I, I think that would be enough of a change to trigger another regionalization grant.
Second question is, you're not really a kill shelter unless the situation unusual. What happens to a sort of a long-term inmate that just isn't popular, that's healthy? Do you keep them there?
We've never put a dog down because he's been there too long. The only dogs.
I'll just give them off some.
Yeah, no, we've never done that, ever. The only dogs we've put down in, in the last couple of years have been ones that were abused and were vicious, and we could not rehome, even if we found somebody who wanted them, we couldn't rehome them. And that's it. We're talking on, on one hand.
Thank you.
I just got a question. Like, how many staff members are there? There's two full-time and then two part-time still?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it. Right. So what, the way it works is we pay a stipend to anybody who will work the workdays, nights. So, so during the day, we've got 24 coverage. But at night, somebody gets from like 6:00 at night until 6:00 in the morning, if they get a call out, they get a stipend to go out and do that for the entire week. And then another person gets a stipend to work from Saturday morning to Monday morning. And the reason for that is somebody's got to feed the animals on the weekend. So if you're the weekend stipend person, you're working even if there's no calls. You still have to go muck the cages and feed the animals and whatever the case might happen to be.
I just talked to Kevin today and we were talking about part-timers and he's, has two right now and it's going to be, it's hard for him to find other part-timers. You'd think that shift Saturday to Monday morning is that the person who worked last weekend was there between the cages, feeding the animals, showings for people coming for adoptions. He was there 12 hours one day and 14 hours the next day. So it's pretty much. adoptions. He was there 12 hours one day and 14 hours the next day. So it's pretty much all weekend, all day. So it's a lot.
I think when I first put my name forward as a candidate for selectmen, I asked someone what it is the selectmen do. And the decision to euthanize a dog or not was one of those things. And for however many years I've been here, I've never had to do that. So that's not true? Selectmen have no role in that?
There is. If, 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 there's a, there's a process. If it's, it's a vicious dog hearing, it's a whole process. But ultimately, I believe if we did have one, it would go through the courts, and then the ultimate decision would be yours.
Yeah, I don't.
Once the ACO would bring the case, and the ultimate decision would be yours.
All right. So that hasn't really happened. I don't think that's ever come before. I would prefer that never really be the, the case. Yeah, silly question, but I learn something every day.
You haven't had to perambulate the house.
Well, I mean, just to give you an example, in my, the prior community I worked in, a gentleman had a pit bull that attacked his own child. And the child was on the edge of life. And he turned the dog over to us immediately, and we put him down. It was a pit bull. It had been raised in a cage. And the second it got out of the cage, the child ran. And when he saw the child run, he chased him down and mauled him to the point where he had arterial bleeding, and the child almost died. And that was it.
Yeah, maybe not overcomplicate the question. Still, I think this is great. It's a wonderful example of regionalization.
It's worthwhile.
Cooperation, particularly in something like this.
And we have, you know, we have, you know, while we share control, we do have control of it. And I think that's really, really important. So I see no reason not to continue. Anything else?
Need a vote?
I would like one. A motion, anyway.
Move to authorize the town administrator to sign an ACO intermunicipal agreement?
Motion's been made by Hal.
Second.
Seconded by Ross. All those in favor? Another three years, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for talking.
Thank you.
And we'll be good. We'll be good for whatever we owe on that car. I think.
Ross will get us a couple of miles.
Yes. So the next item is item number seven. It is a public hearing that was slated for 7:00 PM. However, we will call that public hearing open at, call it 7:55. Apologies for the delay. New liquor license application from KAM Partners LLC doing business as Easy Mart Convenience Store. And my understanding is as a representative or two from Easy Mart? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
I'm Attorney Douglas Sears and Kunal Patel.
Hello.
The manager of KAM. And we're here to, at your pleasure, we'd like to do business in the town and continue the business that is successfully at 311 Main Street. And we'll answer any of your questions and hopefully be an affirmative presentation.
Yeah, understood. Lisa, everything's in the packet. Everything's clear. We've got Attorney Sears forward indicating that everything to his knowledge is, is correct. Forgive me, sir. What was the name?
Kunal Patel.
Please tell me a little bit about yourself. Why Douglas?
I, I, I own a couple of businesses in Jersey. I still own it. Just recently moved down here when I bought the business. So I've been in the business for about nine years now. So it just, when the business sale came up, I was really interested in buying it. Bought it. And then, you know, just really would like to own a business and be a part of the community and serve the community.
Sounds good. Any questions?
This is just continuing the license that was already addressed.
No.
Well, it'd be a new license.
Continuing with the activities.
Everything will be the same.
Ross, Les?
No, I, I think it's, it's good to see an applicant step forward. I think, you know, it's just the process of making sure that people submit their renewals and on time.
Yeah, I think the previous owner didn't do it because it was on the curse.
It was really close to the.
Close to the closing date, and they didn't do it. So we lost that renewal.
It would have been a transfer. Lisa's been great in working through all of this stuff for us, and we're very thankful.
So.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. Great job.
You know, Lisa does a wonderful job. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Seeing as none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Made by Hal, seconded by Ross. You've got to be quick, Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So the question is now before us.
Move approval of a new liquor license for KAM Partners LLC, DBA Easy Mart Convenience Store.
Motion's been made by Hal.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Les. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just like that.
Thank you so much, guys.
Come in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Catching up on our agenda, but at 7:15, we were to hold a public hearing on Joseph Road. We'll now call that hearing, call that open at 7:58, maybe? Paint a picture for me. It's in Joseph Road street layout and consideration of acceptance on spring annual town meeting warrant.
Mr. Benoit coming forward?
Good evening, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matt Benoit, Director of Community Development. We've received a packet petition for a road acceptance. This is the, Lisa, this is the signed deed information that we got. The road has been peer reviewed. The response to the peer review is very good. The only remaining item here is maintenance of the drainage easement, catch basin cleanouts, grass seeding is needed. Reformed by the developer up to town meeting, reviewed and confirmed by myself and the highway superintendent and the highway superintendent to perform inspection of curbing after the winter to make, make any recommendations for repairs as needed. The only outstanding items here. This is, project is well done. Don't have any concerns or issues.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the acceptance? Seeing as none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Joseph Road.
Made by Les this time.
Second.
Seconded by Hal. Motion to close. All in favor? Aye.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance for Joseph Road for the annual town meeting warrant.
Made by Les, seconded by Hal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Get that on the, the warrant.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, that was easy. Could have zoomed that one.
Do you have the next one, too? Don't go far.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead. It's you. Which, oh, no, forgive me. Yeah, William Drive. 7:30 public hearing is now 8:00. Open that public hearing. William Drive, Matt.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this one is, this road has been peer reviewed. There's also some outstanding items here. I can go over the list. I've also provided this in a, in a letter. Grass seeding in the right-of-way easements verified by myself. Stop sign and street sign must be adjusted in here, too. Standards. I believe the developer is, is here and could probably respond to some of these things. I'd like to call him up.
Sure, sir. You want to come forward?
Sure thing. Chris Taylor.
Good evening.
These items have been identified in the peer review and the response letter from their engineer, who's also, I believe, on Zoom. They've committed to making these adjustments, but I've just put them in a letter as outstanding because they're supposed to be done in the springtime, once, once, once the thaw is okay. So stop sign and street sign adjusted to adhere to the MUTCD standards. They've committed to that. Repair sediment for bay inlet, they've committed to that. Engineer should meet with myself and highway superintendent come to terms with gravel access road along the retention basin. There's, there's a little bit of outstanding. Where's this one? Yeah, so this one, what happened was, around the basin, there's, there's supposed to be a 10-foot wide access so that we can maintain it. But on part of the easement is a bulkhead and an overhang of one of the houses that was constructed. So we're trying to make sure that we could still get access around one way or the other. And there's probably some adjustments that need to be made in the field. That's something that came out of the peer review. I'd like to respond to that one.
I'm having a hard time visualizing that.
Yeah. There's a detention basin on one of the parcels. And on the left-hand side, as you're looking at it, there's a bulkhead from one of the houses that encroaches into that 10-foot set.
About two feet, I think.
Right. Not, not, not by much. And then there's an overhang of one of the houses.
We built out four houses and we sold two lots. It was, and the builder made some mistakes on both of those lots. That the one, he's just a little too close to the retention basin with his bulkhead. But it was accepted by the town at the time. And we'll come to the other one in a second.
Yep. It's only the bulkheads were supposed to be in the back and on the side instead.
You know, I don't recall where the design had it, but it, it was designed not to encroach.
All right. So that's something we have to come to terms with at some point prior to town meeting.
Is that currently an occupied house?
Yes.
And does the homeowner play in the, a role in this?
They shouldn't. We're supposed to at least maintain the basin to make sure that we get the 10 feet wide of access, or there's going to be access around the other ways so that we don't have to use that point. It's one or the other. We just have to come to terms with the developer and highway superintendent so long as they get access to it.
All right. So this isn't something that can't be overcome?
Right.
Okay.
Remove the earth material from leaching basin, keep clean until town meeting. It's kind of a maintenance thing. Maintenance catch basins, roadway sweeping performed. Maintenance performed the sediment for bay and fill pond by the developer, reviewed by myself and the highway superintendent. Same thing with curbing. Recommendations for repair by the highway superintendent on the sidewalks. Must adhere to ADA compliance, most notably both ramps. The ramps did not have the ADA compliant.
Pitch?
Yeah.
You can describe.
Yeah, yeah.
Double pass, yes.
Right. Correct.
Round order.
Those need to be installed as well. And recently, we had a concern come up from one of the owners of number seven, William Drive. And we put in here, the developers worked with the owner of seven, William Drive, and highway superintendent to resolve a potential drainage issue as a result of the installed driveway location. Driveway went in where the curbing was supposed to send storm water down into a catch basin, but the driveway is now taking the water from the road. So they had to come to either a berm or curb or something there that meets both the highway and the, the resident.
This is the second lot that was sold. And the driveway is mislocated by 50 feet. That's nowhere close to where the design was. So we'll work to keep the water on the road.
Yeah. Yeah, I did see that video. Certainly not an expert on any of this, but I thought maybe a berm of some sort may, may be a solution to consider.
We'll meet with the highway superintendent and find a solution.
Ma'am, I do see you, and you absolutely have an opportunity to, to speak.
We just have pictures of what you're talking about, but.
I'll send them. We'll see them.
Okay.
The, the board probably did see those.
Yeah, no, no, they're. No, we didn't send anything.
Oh, you, okay. You'll, you'll have a moment. Let's just plow through some of this punch list and be glad to hear you. It's okay.
That was kind of the last thing on the list. Otherwise, there were some items missing in the plan that had been added to the as-built plans. So the plan is all squared away. There's just some field items that need to be addressed prior to town meeting.
And the jeopardy to the town really is none up until the point of acceptance. So we can, if this punch list doesn't meet our satisfaction, we just gloss over, pass over?
Pass over if coming.
Okay. So there's a, a natural stimulus to punch this list out and everyone play nice.
Absolutely.
So. Anything else, Matt or sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. If you could, just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Victoria Maycomer. I'm at 10 William Drive. At the top left of the cul-de-sac. I'm not sure exactly what's in the as-built as far as what is going to be done with the center of the road. It's, there's no HOA, which everyone is happy about. But the center of the road has been recently redone, and it's grass and curbing. And no one knows who's going to take care of it. So I think that needs to be addressed before the road is completed.
My, my initial thought, and I heard whispered voice that it would be the town, that once we accept that.
Yes.
We would be in charge of maintaining that area.
Yes.
Okay.
Good answer, right?
Sorry?
It's a good answer, what you were looking for.
Well, I just don't know how that works, that somebody's going to just come mow a 20-foot circle in a random neighborhood. If that's what happens, that's what happens. Great.
Yeah. Magic planning board was well aware upon review?
It's part of the stormwater infrastructure. It's, it's technically drainage infrastructure. So it's, instead of having the full cul-de-sac worth of stormwater, this, where stormwater can enter the aquifer from there.
And this project was approved underneath the ZBA at the time with that, had type plan control.
Okay.
It was not the plan of one at the time.
Okay.
So as silly as that is, it, there was a, a real purpose behind that little.
Love to hear. Very great.
Those little plots of land always drove me crazy because you couldn't play wiffleball on them. You couldn't do anything, right? But they're there. Anyone else on this issue? All right. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Made by.
We'll give it to Hal.
All right, Hal. And seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're not done yet. We've got one tiny little piece. We'll get one of my shy colleagues to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Williams Drive for the spring town meeting acceptance.
Made by Les.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Now you're good. Just punch that out. Thank you. Mr. Skinner. Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
Too charming to be seen, you lads.
I love it.
Bringing that on special.
He is a troublemaker, Mr. Chairman.
That's sometimes good to have on a board.
Did he just have a birthday recently, too?
Yes. 39, I heard.
Again, happy birthday.
Jack Benny.
So, good evening. I, I've admired you for a number of years. You see a need in town, and you, you go all in, from pickleball to recycling to just about anything you touch. You're engaged. And I thank you for, for being a part of the community and giving us your energies. So it's not very often. We typically grill our appointments. But yeah, you've definitely made an impact. Is, any questions for Mr. Skinner?
All right. I think it's great that you're stepping forward and stuff like that. I know he's involved with the Board of Health.
Pickleball.
And the pickleball league, maybe.
Among other things.
Yeah. So, great.
Good. So entertain a motion for, this is an alternate appointment, an alternate post.
So move.
Made by Hal.
Second.
Seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very easy, sir.
There you go.
I can lead?
You are.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
It lasts, read it last.
And we are now on to, we're passing over 1112, the grant acceptance. The first is MLCGP, a municipal local cybersecurity grant program for $2,812.50. This was garnered to us from our IT department, which is lovely.
So, Mr. Chairman, the most important document here is the last page in this part of the packet. So it's a reminder to you that the total grant award is $14,062.50. This portion that you're approving tonight is the Commonwealth's contribution to the matching requirement. These funds will have to be tracked separately, but it is for one common purpose, which is the cybersecurity project that we're working on right now.
Did I get a second email test from admin@douglasmass.org? I didn't...
I can neither confirm nor deny that we would do that to you.
I did not click it. It looked a little sus. So I passed.
But that's not going to be your excuse for not opening the email with the training requirements under no before.
I think that's what he's referring.
Correct.
That one you have to open and click on the links and do the training.
Yeah. I don't want to be on that list of people.
It's a very intimidating list. It's about eight hours total, and you have a year to do it.
63 modules.
63 modules, wow. You guys really...
Hold on.
Took the big package.
I got a year.
You're not supposed to say that. You're supposed to let the town administrator say eight hours over a year. And you start with the 63 thing.
63.
63 steps.
For an email? For an email address?
Just do one at a time. It takes eight hours.
One at a time over the year.
So I guess it will have to be reminders and progress trackers and stuff like that.
Well, there will be because we can see who's doing it.
That's good. I did take one of the courses through that vendor and stuff like that. They're pretty thorough and stuff like that. A lot of cases that you don't think of and stuff like that. So, you know, again, this helps our insurance and our ratings and stuff like that to be able to make sure our employees are all trained and in the time that we live in, all the risks out there.
Yeah, we're trying to sensitize people to just what a dangerous world we live in. Not every scam is as obvious as some prince of a long-lost kingdom in Africa or Southern Asia saying that he's stuck on the side of the road and needs your credit card number. Those don't fool anybody anymore. Some of the ones we've received that were not part of any test were a document that absolutely looked like a valid invoice, and it was spoofed on my email account. So my email was being used to generate notices to department heads and others that they owed money and to, you know, and it's very convincing that those things get clicked on and they lead to bad places. So we're just trying to get everybody used to all of the simple shortcuts you can take to identify a message. Because typically, if people stop and think, they realize it's suspicious and they don't open it. It's when you're in a hurry. Haste makes waste. You think you know what you're looking at, and you click on it, and all of a sudden your screen goes, no, you know, thank you for sending 10,000 emails on contact list.
No, there's been, even in corporate world, there's been a lot of false addresses and stuff like that for billing and stuff, you know, checks being sent out to companies that look legitimate but aren't or similar names. So it's good.
No, it is important.
I see there's a requirement for the FEMA required map. Any chance that's going to fund, they're going to be embargoed? FEMA doesn't seem their most popular program with the administration.
I really do not know the answer, Mr. Chairman, to Selectman Davis's question. I should hope not. I don't know that some of the most recent comments by administration officials about cybersecurity or anything I agree with, because I think they've been somewhat cavalier. But hopefully, they won't interrupt grants that have already been awarded.
Yeah.
So.
Let's hope not.
And if so, we're on the hook for...
The president's touching upon it this evening in his address, keeping the FEMA funds for Douglas.
He leads with that, I think.
Yeah.
So if that were to happen, we would then in turn have to absorb the $11,250 loss of grant money. But we're still moving forward with cybersecurity. All right, so entertain a motion to accept this cyber grant.
So move.
Made by Hal.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's an executive order. Lisa, that's signed. They don't mean to be flippant. Let's get through this. 63 modules, though. I mean, forgive me if I'm not super excited about that. entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, February 4, 2025.
Motion's been made by Les.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me. Number 14, we are going to skip over. That was probably a week too early, however, however that may be. Number 15 is the articles for the warrant and what we've currently got in the works. Take this in no particular order. Might as well start at the top. The thoughts from the board in regards to adopting chapter 59.5(c) and a one and a half tax exemption for veterans, seniors, and the blind. Is that something we want to put forward to the townspeople?
We had a pretty good presentation. It was a little bit complicated, but we covered all the bases at that time.
Yeah, I think Chris Pumpka coming before us and the impact that it could help residents and stuff like that, I think it'd be good to kind of let the town decide at, you know, spring meeting. I don't want to speak before anybody else, but, you know, I've talked to some of the folks at the senior center and other around town that were seeking some, you know, assistance and stuff like that and needs. Again, this is to update, you know, and give it opportunity to help veterans and seniors and folks who are disabled, so.
Ross, any thoughts on?
No, I think it's a great idea to recognize these people that could use a little rake, I guess.
That's good. I also am in agreement, I think, as a policymaking board, any chance we can get to make life maybe a teeny, I don't want to overstate the impact here, but make it just a little bit easier for some people that certainly, undoubtedly, given the cost of everything, having a difficult time. I think it's a thoughtful and frankly compassionate thing to do. So when push comes to shove, I'll be in support of bringing that before the town. Stormwater bylaw and map. My understanding is planning board was taking that up. Little behind in my YouTube watching. I'm not certain that happened yet, but you're here to tell us.
Yes, the planning board, their meeting on February 12 voted unanimously to support the draft bylaw. Last night, the Conservation Commission also voted unanimously to support the draft bylaws.
Oh, nice. So you have letter of support from both the other regulatory boards this evening?
Yeah, I was present at the conservation meeting, just acting as the stakeholder committee for the stormwater, presenting, because I know they had some open questions regarding how everything came together. Just a number of their questions through kind of the history of how the committee was formed, know what the focus was, and the board voted unanimously on conservation. But it's been a great thing to share with them. Do we still have to circle back with FinCom, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So that was February 12 that meeting took place?
Yes.
That was...
With the planning board, yes.
Quick and efficient government. I mean, what did we meet, the first week of February? So that was right there. Good.
I think it was the next day.
Is that right? The Keven property parking area.
Okay, so I'm supposed to meet with the Open Space Committee on March 11 on this? Right now, we're trying to work out some quotes. So in front of the Keven property, there's an easement on private property. They want to turn this into a little parking area for maybe one, maybe two cars tops, so that someone could park there and then access the trail. They've solicited quotes, but there's an opportunity here where we might be able to get some pro bono work from another resident in town to get this accomplished without cost and then possibly get the highway department to do the work. So this might not be a budget item at all. But I'm not going to really know until I talk to them at Open Space on March 11. So I'm asking that we keep this as an open placeholder until the night that we close the warrant, two weeks.
What's the width of the opening?
Only 14 or 16 feet. It's not very wide. It cannot fit two vehicles.
Yeah, not both ways and stuff like that.
So behind those houses on Southeast Main, that's all town-owned property?
Yeah, there's a ton. It's 60-something acres, I believe.
And that's where the Mr. Skinner sign is currently located? I know that's probably very temporary, but yeah, that's great. I'd love that, actually.
I'm just not sure if this is going to go on as a warrant request or a budget request. It's just something we need to work out.
Okay. Thank you for that. The accessory dwelling unit bylaw amendment. Have we heard from the AG?
We have not. So we're running out of time to get the amendments to the planning board and hold a public hearing. But I don't know if we're going to have enough time by the time the warrant closes in two weeks, but on the rare chance that we actually get comments back from them within a week, that's about the end of time that I could do, one way or the other, public hearing with the planning board. So maybe we just hold on to this for another two weeks, and maybe this doesn't make the warrant. It's possible. The AGO's office doesn't have to respond till March 31, and I think they're going to use every day. Because every time I reach out to them, they don't give me any feedback. So I'm not getting any response. And I know they're loaded up with a lot of these right now. Towns all over the Commonwealth are submitting their drafts for Spring Town Meeting, and there are only some that submitted theirs as part of their fall warrant, and they're not even getting to those. So it's kind of frustrating for us right now.
So we acted in the fall to protect the town.
Yes.
Which I entirely support and appreciate your leadership collectively on shepherding that along. If we were to move forward as if there were no issues from the AG, what's to stop us from saying no news is good news?
Well, the bylaw would be in place one way or the other. There's going to be some recommended edits. We're just anticipating what those are at this point. Maybe those make it on the fall warrant and we just sit through it for a summer, but we're going to have a bylaw in place one way or the other.
Yeah, and I guess the urgency's gone because the state law is in effect.
Yes.
Okay.
Folks are coming in and asking about it, and we're just telling them, look, we're waiting for the AGO's response on this, so telling folks to come back March 31. I'll have some answers by then.
But then we have some land in Uxbridge that the townspeople will be asked to sell, make some money off land that we're currently not benefiting from. Yeah.
So if memory serves me, and I think it does, process is that the select board will probably for our next agenda have an agenda item to review and declare this property not needed for any municipal purpose. And that frees it up for town meeting, which must act on interest in real property, to authorize the select board through the town administrator's office to sell it following the Chapter 30b, Section 16 process. So the first thing I would do after town meeting directs you is sign up for an appraisal and have the property appraised. We would establish fair market value or a floor price and put it out to bid.
Yep. Good.
Landlocked parcel?
Technically, no. So this is the old Aldrich donation of land to the town, and it was broken into pieces. So an entity called KTKT owns a big chunk of it. But when the lots were all in one piece, there was an easement to serve all of the land in that lot that ran across the Bosma parcel, the Gulf Force along Northeast Main. So that is still there as a deeded easement. So from the appraiser's point of view, as long as that piece of land had an easement to go to a public way, it will be valued as an industrial lot with access and not a landlocked parcel. So that will improve the value. One of the interesting things about the 30b conversation when we put out the RFP is whether or not you want to put any conditions on sale. And you might want to start thinking about some of the things we did with the Webster Street parcel and others where we required a project to be part of the plan for the parcel for it to be sold. Because we frankly don't want anybody playing games with this. Clearly, I'm not going to pull any punches. This is a parcel that abuts the cubes at Gilboa that a potential tenant would like to have in order to expand the parking capacity of the facility. And so to the extent that we can act in good faith towards following the steps necessary to get that lot sold, we want to be able to do that in order to facilitate getting a tenant in the building. It really is of no use to us. It's, you know, a large portion of it is wetlands. And it's only really of the 16-plus, almost 17 acres, is probably six or seven acres of usable land.
Probably a lot of golf balls. Good for the town.
Fair warrant.
A lot of golf balls, too.
They're not toxic from as far as, as long as there's no peepholes in golf balls, we're all set.
Do we need a town warrant article to accept donations of land or whatever else, like a general one? like a general one? Is it a yearly one that we have to do? No? Okay, just wanted to clarify.
No, I mean, when you say donations, there are different varieties and flavors of donation?
Yeah.
Some go to town meeting.
The conservation land.
Conservation is a completely different process under the statute.
Okay.
Does Uxbridge have first dibs on this land?
No.
In any way, shape or form?
It just happens to be located in their town. It's not theirs, they don't tax it, municipalities don't tax one another. Now, they will tax it, so if it's developed in any way, whatever's there, the value will be for the town of Uxbridge to-
It's a tax.
Our only benefit here is the sale.
Yeah.
They should work along with us, it's going to benefit them for tax revenues.
And I believe Oxford Jones land in Douglas, too.
It does.
Yeah. Yeah, my only initial thought, and I'm horrific at visualizing this, is that I really don't want to back ourselves into another outlet for that facility, but people smarter than me have indicated that that's not the intent of this. Can that be something that we can put in as a protection, even though there's technically an easement?
That the buyer extinguished the easement?
After paying for it? Yeah.
A little bit of a whipsaw, but.
Yeah, I would leave it to folks that-
Plan attached upon purchase, so that could be part of the plan. I know what you're saying, we don't need trucks, we're trying to avoid trucks coming in and out of Park Road, but if it's 20 feet down the street.
Having said that, why would you build a second driveway when you already have one?
Yeah, right, true.
Right? And that Northeast Main access point is for emergency vehicles only. So the cubes at Gilboa is supposed to manage all of its traffic to Gilboa.
Yeah. No, that's, that's good.
So do we have two, only two on this list that we can approve, or the four at the moment?
Well, I don't, I don't know what the agenda says. We will, over the next meeting, probably get that traditional chart that has all the warrants that we'll accept, or maybe at that point go over them all and formally support, but it sounds like the board is in support of the five that are presented here.
I guess, on this first bullet point, there's some work here for council to make sure that the language is-
Language, correct.
So if you're in favor of it, why don't we just direct council to do the draft necessary to put it on the warrant?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's good.
I think you do the same with Stormwater.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, we need to kind of get the articles drafted.
Get that language, yeah.
So, yeah, because that language is going to take a little while, so if they work on drafting these.
Did you put possible votes on this item?
Yeah.
So if you could do that for the first two bullet points and the last one, because the last one, by authorizing us to move forward with the process, we'll put it on your next agenda to have that finding that's not needed for municipal purposes, then we'll move on. Any other two we'll take under advisement?
I'll make a motion to have the warrant articles, which is adopting the Chapter 59C, 5C and a half, and the Stormwater bylaw map article, and the town-owned land in Uxbridge is 16.5, to be drafted by our legal counsel.
I'll second.
Made by Les, seconded by Russ. All those in favor? All right. All right, coming out strong.
Good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Municipal light plant discussion, kind of a standing line item here, agenda item in our agenda, really designed to just keep discussions going if and when it's warranted. Anything to report on that at this point?
We've been trying to get an appointment with the so-called experts on this that are based in Mansfield, and it looks like next Thursday is going to be when we can finally get together.
Good.
I can just add something that I shared with Matt, and I want to share with the rest of the board. I was down in a conference in Orlando, and our wonderful town of Douglas came up on as a potential data center site, you know, with National Grid, you know, kind of highlighting, hey, this could be a potential data site, which was interesting, being down in Orlando, talking to a guy and-
How did they discover us?
You know, it's just National Grid was, you know, has, has one of us has identified as probably a potential site, so they're in our-
Yeah, to this point, Grid's been very helpful, and they're ready to go. Now, this is a multi-year process, so it's not like lightning. Don't get excited.
Yeah.
It's not going to work that way, but they are anxious to take the next step and get the paperwork moving and lock in an economic arrangement, financial arrangement with whatever party has site control on the location to do the study necessary to figure out how they're going to get the necessary amount of power to a substation and the power of the site. And we've had to ask them to hold, because there are site control issues that are completely had nothing to do with the town, between the owners of Pine Santa Gravel and potential suitors. So we don't yet have that moneyed party that will be willing to fund the study for Grid. So we had to ask Grid to hold their horses for now, until that issue is resolved between private parties. But, yeah, these things take on a life of their own, and they move along fairly quickly, and that's kind of what I was flagging for you early on in the process. There's a point at which it's hard to, it's hard to slow the truck down, as the guy found out on 195 today when he plowed through, eight cars. You have a lot of momentum going into a process, and that momentum builds over time, so we ought to be thoughtful about how much energy we put into the throttle. The reason why we're going to meet with these municipal light and power people who consult those, the towns that already have that arrangement by, under the statute, is to understand better the inner workings of the statute. Our understanding is that we don't need for the town to build a plant, or even a part of a plant, or to completely fund a substation. The town can actually pick and choose a component of the overall energy infrastructure on the site that it wants to own and generate revenue from, and this is one of my primary concerns, is getting past the residential real estate tax bases, the only driver for revenues of the community going forward. And when you think about what a data center does, they run 24/7, 365. So if you, if the town were able to take an economic position on a part of the asset that was necessary 24/7, and we had a steady rate of revenue that's being charged, pun intended, I guess, from that electrical asset, then you're going to get that small but important stream of revenue that'll offset the need for additional levy. So that's, you know, one of the major considerations in my mind. We're still working out the business case. Chris Pupka's done a lot of research on the likely values and how much that would generate at our current tax rate for the town for different sizes of assets configured in different ways. So that business case is being developed. It'll probably be a couple of more meetings before I'm able to show you, as I don't like to do half-baked business cases, I want to make actually a real case, but that's where we are.
But, I mean, we're methodically, it's not the first thing everyone does in a day, but we're giving it the proper attention it deserves.
Yeah, we've got all the right voices at the table, but some of it is stymied, there's a, the whole-
It's a law-moving chip.
The ownership issue, the site control issue has to be resolved, because whoever our partner is in that infrastructure development piece of it, we have to understand who that is, so that we understand what it is that they need there. I think what we're proceeding with, and this is a little bit off-topic, but I'll bring it up, is that really, no matter what we do on that side of town, we will need to pursue that water tank that we've discussed with the North Street residents, being installed on the piece of property that it was originally thought was going to go, up near North Village, in order to give the water department a significant source of water for fire suppression efforts on that side of town related to commercial development. It'll also improve our, all of our interconnectivity downtown. Since a lot of our assets are on the western end of town, we need to make sure that we have something located over there that can handle it. So our Mass Works grant and EDA grant efforts are going to be largely directed towards that water tank. That's where the grant question gets really sticky, because EDA has more or less been completely shut down by the new administration. But I don't think that's permanent. I would like to believe that the folks in the administration support economic development and infrastructure in particular as a critical way to open the door for anybody who wants to take an opportunity, but for local governments, it's something that we need anyway. I'm hoping logic prevails on that, that doesn't become any kind of football. The EDA, years ago when I worked on the Hill, you know, back when there were dinosaurs and stuff, 25 years ago, so the EDA was having its troubles, as was HUD, because a lot of grant efforts were, had really run amok, and all sorts of useless things were being built. After congressional oversight and redesign of the programs, they really got highly focused on the things that people really believe in, are good economic development tools, you know, they really, I don't think they're a pushover anymore. The amount of documentation that we've had to supply is significant, and just about every project that I'm familiar with that the New England EDA office has been involved in has been a really, really strong project that really needed to be done, so.
Seems like we have a lot of political support from congressmen and senators with projects in their states.
It's almost like, be careful of what you ask for. If the delegation from this part of the country supports it, chances are the White House won't. So it's kind of like, everybody just be quiet.
Yeah.
Play your cards, play the merit.
They're about to kill it.
Nobody really knows what's going to happen.
Well, we're not Maine right now, so that's good.
Well, we're not Maine.
So, all right, that's, that's helpful, Matt. Goals continue to be on that budget, on that, however, I think for this line item, let's talk budget.
So I've looked back over the past few years, I generally drop a budget into the process right about the middle of March, so right around St. Patrick's Day is pretty much when I usually get a final document, everyone that's balanced. I'm going to keep that scheduled this year. There is a point at which we just have to say, all right, I'm not going to speculate anymore, I'm just going to work my numbers and get to a balanced budget. The biggest piece of work that needs to be finished is this board's work around property and casualty insurance, which is the process we'll kickstart at your next meeting. So we'll be asking Maya to come in for just a general conversation about working with them and-
You Zoom dropped off, just letting you know.
Oh.
I think it has to be on for you guys to continue.
Nope.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think anybody was on it.
I know. Does that help, that helps with the recording, though, doesn't it?
So I had a, I had a Zoom meeting, was it Tuesday? Sunday, and I'm, once I get it going and make sure and everything's good.
There we go.
I just sit there and I'm clicking buttons and I get out of it. I had no idea whether I dropped the 90 people that were on the Zoom or not. On a Sunday morning, right?
We've had that happen where someone, because some of them say, you know, do you want to leave, or do you want to leave like now, and you sometimes leave now and you drop everybody.
Yeah, that's what I thought I did, and thankfully.
You were tortured.
Yeah, no, I don't know what would have happened.
And they do, and the funny thing, they do know when you drop a Zoom, they do know who did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just, but when I did get back on camera and I was, what does it go?
Unexpected drops.
They knew.
Very.
But you wouldn't think it'd be hard to get 90 doctors on Zoom, but it's harder than you'd think.
On a Sunday morning.
On a Sunday morning.
Yeah, no, it's hard.
Yeah.
So we'll be bringing the budget to you, because I will have finished, once we get that number. I guess I'll address it now rather than during my report, so it'll just be moving one item to another slot in the agenda. The thing that everyone should keep in mind is that while it is important to try to save money, and I think there is an opportunity to save money here, one of the characteristics of our current coverage with Maya that's a little bit concerning is the declarations of value and some of the coverage terms may not be a good value and may not represent the actual asset base of the town. I think they've significantly undervalued our buildings and some of our vehicles, and in many cases, they don't even account for a lot of our most expensive equipment, which the purpose of having insurance is to cover your risk, and, you know, I don't want 10 cents back on the dollar for the town if we lose something. You pay for insurance to get the replacement value, which would be dollar for dollar. And Lisa and I have made probably four years' worth of effort, and it was probably at least one year with Suzanne before that, trying to send all the necessary paperwork to Maya to get a list of values that reflects what we truly, what the town truly owns and would need to replace if we had the kind of calamity that the insurance has purchased to prevent or to address. So to the extent that the broker looking to place our business is taking our actual values and the bids are coming in against insuring to that value, you might see that the price gap is going to be narrow, but what we're, would be getting is a much better policy, and we wouldn't have to worry about, well, what happens if we have a loss and we go to the paper and they didn't, they didn't cover it? Because it's all nice and hunky-dory to sit here in a meeting like this and have someone from the brokerage, that broker's Maya Insurance, say, oh, no, we'd honor it anyway, versus what is in writing, and that would be enforced by a judge if we ever had to litigate to enforce our coverage. And that was some of the tension that occurred four years ago, when we had a conversation about the replacement value of-
Fire rate.
-expensive fire engines. And the gentleman from the brokerage challenged Maya by saying, your paper doesn't say that you'd cover it. Maya responded with, well, yes, we would, because we did in this case and in that case. And subsequently, they've changed that policy, they don't do it anymore. So I think what that clearly demonstrates is that there is, in all conversations about all insurance products, the necessity to very carefully listen to the words the presenter is using, because they're choosing those words very carefully, to be crystal clear about exactly what they will do and will not do. So we had a conversation last meeting about asking good questions. You have to be really aggressive and simply ask it straight out, rather than, don't find a polite way to say, are you going to cover this or not, and at what value are you going to cover? Because that's the conversation we need to have to get to good answers. So what does that mean for the budget? The budget, we did clarify with Norfolk Yaggy after quite a bit of back and forth between Douglas Public Schools Administration and Norfolk, that they had told us in a letter they, they had eight applications from Douglas. They actually have six. They have four applying to be freshmen and two who are not part of, are not students in the Douglas Public School system, but they're Douglas residents, are applying to be sophomores. So we have a total of six, and-
Were they BVT?
No, one's Whitemanville Christian and the other is a school called White Oak. No, one's Whitemanville Christian and the other is a school called White Oak. So that's to the positive, right? So 30,000 a kid, so we just, you think, well, we just saved 60 grand. But then I went and checked with the tax assessor on the new growth figure and what he was comfortable, what the two of us are comfortable putting into the budget, we were $50,000 less than we originally had, so it kind of netted out. Right now I have a number that's red, it's $85,000. And if the insurance inquiry doesn't address that and turn that back to a black number, I will go back through the budget, I've identified items that I will cut and took it to a balance. As you know, it is my habit that when I do that, I tell you where I ended up and then I tell you how I balanced the budget in a memo with bullet points, I took this much, this much, this much, this much from these accounts. In an ideal world, I would get back to black because there are a couple of things I would like to be able to do that I think are really important. One is to keep pecking away at snow and ice, even if it's five, $10,000, just keep growing that amount so that it's available every year and we don't spill over into free cash because we have a snowy winter. And the other is to increase the reserve fund that's set aside for the finance committee to utilize for unanticipated issues during the year. Right now a vet account is $50,000. We don't necessarily spend it down every year, but what has come up with our insurance is a $25,000 deductible per incident. So if we have two or three major claims, and it's not that we've never done that, we have, we'd be on the hook for the first 25 grand of it. So that would, that would blow right through the reserve fund at 50 grand, so it needs to be more than what it is right now. Also on the budget, and it was a goal that we talked about, is resolving the health insurance arrangement going forward from July 1st. We've made a lot of progress there. The brokers there are working on a solution that is pretty much the same parameters that I've described to you. So we keep all of our same vendors, we would not co-mingle our funds with any other municipality except at a very high level for stop-loss contract negotiations and retiree coverage. But our claims fund would be just Douglas and we would, over time, try to nurse a surplus into existence or take any money we can get out of MSHG and put it into equity to form what is called captive, which is a, basically a self-funded stop-loss fund. So you stop to reduce your premiums paid for stop-loss coverage because you're covering it, major claims yourself. And that takes time to evolve, but the ownership, leadership structure of that is very different and it wouldn't involve a board. So, that's where we're going with that. So right now I have a 12% in the budget, 12% increase for the health insurance line item. And that's going to incorporate a couple of things. One is, we know we have to put more money in every year because we've took, taken four years of zeros in a row. And it has mostly worked out because we had a surplus in our funds at MSHG, we didn't get tagged last year with a big overrun. This year we're running right about even, right? So we're taking out about as much as we're putting in, but that's not a good place to be. So we know we need a rate increase just to cover the necessity of cash flow. There's also a tremendous amount of pressure in the marketplace, especially around retiree insurance. So we know that our Aetna premiums that we share with retirees 50/50 are going to be going up by quite a bit, so that we need to build that into that line item. So I don't see that going down. I'm hoping it doesn't go up. Supposed to knock on wood that's not painted. So, that's, that's your budget update. Like I say, I don't really sweat numbers that are less than 100 grand and trying to scatter that across the budget to balance the budget, that's really not a hard task to do.
Is that zero, zero funding to capital?
No, so that's a different issue, right? So we will close free cash and get it certified in October after the books close. And that's, free cash is a separate item, right? It's unanticipated revenues and savings from budgeted expenses that weren't spent and it becomes an unrestricted general reserve. And what we're going to do this year in terms of freezing capital is we're holding back the free cash we have certified as a buffer against the run-out of claims from the group once we leave it. And after a lot of discussion both with the brokers and with Rich Bowen, and listening to the most recent board member, board meeting of MSHG, it's probably the most prudent thing for us to do. I think the last board meeting of the group was constructive and encouraging. They seemed to acknowledge that they would be paying out any town that was leaving that had a surplus, which is only one, which is Douglas. And they also, I think appropriately said, if you're leaving with a deficit, don't think you're not going to pay your bill, because you are. And that was an encouraging thing to hear. But having said that, they don't have any money to pay our run-out. They don't. It's just that simple. So even if we, even if the town of Douglas pays all of its bills through the 30th of June, they have a net equity position that at this point is negative $8.1 million.
Wait, say that again, how much?
Negative 8.1.
Eight.
So the last time I updated you was negative 4.5.
Yeah.
So in one quarter, they've added another 3.6 million in deficit. So at this point, it's not irresponsible to say that by the time we get to June 30th, they could be looking at a deficit in their working funds of $12 million. So how in the world are they going to pay our run-out? Especially when we're leaving and we're not going to be paying premium anymore.
How are they paying the medical bills now with that much, there's still some cash left?
So, have you ever done this? Have you ever been a receiver?
Never been a receiver.
No? The trick is, whatever comes in the door goes right back out.
Yeah.
And you look at your payables and see how, how much they've aged and who will work with you to extend those payables. And you pay those. And that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
So for them, for anybody paying attention to this, I know it's exciting stuff, but there are rates of compensation negotiated with the healthcare providers, they're called network agreements. Basically, the insurer says, we'll pay you X, and the provider says, okay, we'll accept X.
Yep.
And those are usually done at a discount because the insurer is guaranteeing the volume. They're saying, we're going to send all of our coverage to your, your hospital to get their care. Under a network agreement, you must pay a provider within 30 days. That's just the standard industry term. So hospitals and docs and all providers are not waiting more than 30 days to be compensated by a municipal employee group. So, once the payables age past 30 days, there's going to be a reckoning, who's going to cover that? Now, they're switching to Harvard Pilgrim for administrative services only contract and Harvard Pilgrim is universally famous for giving you, by becoming the bank of HP for a certain period of time. Question is though, how much do you want to risk if you're HP on this group that's come to you with $12 million deficit, which by my estimate is six or seven weeks of aging on your payables? It's, it's going to come to a head, I don't think it's going to end nicely.
Heads might go.
Probably the most useful exercise of my life when we were, the city of One Saka had declared insolvency.
Yep.
And we were trying to just pay the bills for the city. You go through a completely different spreadsheet exercise. You look who needs to be paid when, right? Who charges what interest, who does the what? And you start to pick and choose who you're going to pay with what revenue you think you get coming in from whoever. And it's a.
Pay-poll.
You know, you can do that stuff for like 12 months, but after a while, it just, it's done.
Well, the cycle of poverty will catch up to you.
Eventually, you cannot escape.
So let me ask, so capital, I feel good about that in the fall, assuming the numbers all line up. Norfolk Aggie comes a little lower than what we thought. Is there money to be had to get rid of that brown building driven by that? And I see that hole in the roof and I'm just thinking, this town's too nice to be tolerating that for much longer. And I know there's supports of various other committees. Is that something that we can put forward?
So, I'm a, a big supporter of and believer in the capital committee's process, which is rank order prioritization, spend dollars on what. Having said that though, there has to be an acknowledgement that there will always be these small projects that will never get a score high enough to get done, but they need to be done. And personally, my view is the select board has the authority to go to the warrant yourself and ask town meeting for however much you think you need to demolish the building. And not to circumvent the capital process. It'd be better if the capital process just picked it up and gave it a higher enough score, but almost, at that point you're kind of jerry-rigging the scoring system.
Yeah, there's a lot of needs.
But as, as a board, you have a responsibility to manage the assets of the town, right? So you have an attractive nuisance, liability associated with it. It's never going to get any better, it's just going to keep getting worse. It's an eyesore, it's right across from the common, right next door to a cemetery where people visit.
Yep.
Supposed to be a place of honor for all those that are buried there. And now you're going to have this house falling down with, with critters living in it. It might just reach the point where you say, look, we're just going to ask town meeting for 30 grand to tear this thing down.
It's kind of where I'm at. I don't know where the rest of the board is, but.
Yeah.
You're in agreement?
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
It's time.
Yeah, it's time.
It's been on the list of consideration for three, four years, it's just never going to get there. Because it's always a public safety issue that's more pressing.
I mean, I think also when, when the town purchased the property, it was under the condition that it would be torn down within a certain timeframe, which is gone way beyond that. So, you in favor?
Al?
Yeah.
Yeah? We're going to discuss this more, the budget as it develops, but I think you might have the support of the board to, to act here and wholly cognizant of the time and energy spent by capital, but also we are the town's leaders and I think we make a case that we've been very patient with that.
I think the process here would be, the expense would be remediating the asbestos, not because it's practical, but because the rules say we have to do certain things that are expensive. So, but once all the asbestos is gone, we could have just anybody knock the thing down and resolve it.
Is that something that we can get an estimate on to make a educated decision on whether to act the spending plan? Excuse me?
I'd probably get you a very loose quote.
Alright.
Give you a rough idea where you are.
Alright. I think that's well worth our time and energy to, to look into.
And it eliminates one liability anyway, you know?
Well, you're going to make more progress than that, right? So if 11 Gleason Court, I'm finishing up the RFP, we're sliding into my report, is that next to?
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Hold on to it.
So I'm, I'm finalizing that RFP. The town has tried to sell this building for so gosh darn long that, you know, trying to locate all the records that were used in the past. We have a lead paint report, we have an asbestos report, we have PCB report, we're just trying to get everything together so that we disclose all the material conditions. But our vacant building coverage is right now, 11 Gleason Court, 11 Arnold, which is a little shack that we took at tax.
Mm-hmm.
The little brown house.
Mm-hmm.
Why do I think I'm forgetting? Oh, and the.
Old fire station.
The old central, central school.
The VFW, yeah, yeah.
The VFW.
VFW hall, the old, yeah, and then the old fire station.
The old fire station we use, so it's actually on our active.
I don't think that should be taken down, that should be restored if anything.
Okay. Oh, no, 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 just talking about what's vacant.
There's a lot of history there.
There is, there is.
Yeah, that's a, that's a untouchable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There may be components that we may not be able to salvage.
Right.
But the building itself kind of has to stay.
Yeah.
Actually, never been in there.
So there are actually hooks on the wall where firefighters used to hang their gear with their names on them. And if you go in there, you'll see Jay Furno, MK Hill.
Is that right?
Mr. Quinton.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, it's kind of cool.
Yeah.
But right now we, we've got the antique fire engine in there, I think we move in some of the bolts.
Yeah.
From time to time where the chipper comes in and out of there. Not even sure of it all. Just remember it's two pieces, there's a cinder block.
Yeah.
Much more recent construction and then there's the historic piece.
I just sent, not to get off subject, but I just sent John Furno a picture from 1946 in front of that fire station. It had the '35 Ford truck, the, forget what year it was, but it's a, was a converted hearse into a forestry truck and our, and our brand new 1946 fire engine that we, we got. And the picture from 1946 was submitted by Buffett Terry.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
Really?
Or going back to that particular article. I can't say it was from, the picture was from 46, but I can't say that the article was from 46.
Some grant money for restoration, it ties in nice with a junk store if you made it for fire protection.
That's a long way ahead of us. So, so we've got the budget, we have the insurance, we have a health insurance group and, you know, bringing sufficient honor to these gentlemen who have passed in the last week, have been most of the occupation of our time in the office, pretty much. I mean, those insurance questionnaires were a pair. Just, you know, everything you ever wanted to know about Douglas but were afraid to ask, it's just, oh my God.
Yeah, I mean, I think we probably knew that opening this can of worms, but I commend you both for, for tackling really it because.
When's the last time you saw somebody use the skate park? Do you know, we have a skate?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I was thinking about that the other day. That can't be utilized, yeah.
It's tiny, right? It's not even being used.
Like the old pink ball facilities at the White.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So that's really where we are on all of this stuff. We're marching towards town meeting in an organized way, I don't think anything's run amok. I don't really anticipate any major landmines. I do want to kind of go back to, before I close, with the animal control officer, I've been asked a number of questions behind the scenes that were answered today. So I got expenditure details from Chief Montmanee and then he, tonight, explained how many violations have been issued and kind of updated the Douglas record so that the notion that we haven't had any violations or any tickets or any, is, is not accurate. That doesn't mean that the service record is 100% glowing, because it's not. But I was very silent during that conversation for one particular reason, which is, in my experience, I was a town manager in a town where there was no dog pound and the ACO brought dogs and cats and other domestic animals to the vet to be kennelled until they were either adopted or euthanized. Wicked expensive.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay? Nutty bar expensive. Then you have to get access to that kennel because the vet will tell you, I'm not feeding those animals. You have to come up here and then you have one staffer. If I tell you that, oh my gosh, what did we spend? Memory serves me $160,000 to $170,000 a year for all the doodads. And here we're paying like 30 grand a year.
Oh, regional, the regional works.
It really is the most cost-effective way to deal with this. And there is a mechanism to chase down things that don't go right. And we'll just continue to follow that when there are things that don't go right. But generally speaking, as an intermunicipal agreement, this has been pretty successful. It's especially good that they realize they're not going to grow anymore.
Yeah.
That they, they know what their assets are. The cost of building an animal shelter to code that the Humane Society and the SPCA and everybody else is willing to sign off on is very high. So kudos to the town of Blackstone, they've been an excellent partner here for allowing all of the other towns to use their facility because without that, we would have to raise a lot of money as a group. as a group to build that facility out, so. That's kind of odd to explain that. We had gotten a lot of answers during the day. I have them, I did bring them up in meetings because nobody else was asking the question. That concludes my report.
Yeah, they had me at kennel. That feels plug and play and helpful. We've got a motion to move into executive session to be made.
We will be very brief tonight.
I will make a motion to enter executive session for A, petition, potential litigation for MSHG, B, interest in real property, town-owned land in Uxbridge, 16 and a half acres, and to reconvene and to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Thank you, Ross.
Mr. Chairman, before you take your second, if I would just intervene, I do not believe that second item will be discussed tonight. I know it will not be discussed. So, anybody looking at these minutes in future, we will not talk about those. B, which item A.
It will not be discussed.
All right, so I accept that amendment and seconded by Hal. Roll call vote.
David's eye.
Stephen's eye.
On and eye.